Good evening.
Welcome to the seventy-second annual town meeting of the village of Evendale.
We will begin with electing a secretary for the meeting. The usual procedure is we try to, we elect ICRC who takes the minutes and everything of the meeting, so if I could have a motion that they proceed to be the secretary for the meeting.
So, Lou?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, they are officially the secretary for the meeting. Okay, so let's begin with the presentation. I am going to present my presentation, and then I'll come back and also present the finance presentation. Jeff Albrink is not with us tonight, he and his family, he and his family have scheduled a out-of-town vacation or something, and they're just not available to us tonight. Jeff is retiring, as you know, from council, and he's been a great council person, fourteenth of November, I think, is his last meeting, and so you all might come down and say goodbye to him. He's not gonna go away, not gonna let him go away, but he's gonna continue to be involved with the village. Okay, going through the little slide presentation that we have, on the first page is our staff that takes care of the people day in and day out. Takes care of people day in and day out. On the upper side, upper corner, is the new GTC building, which is under construction over in Arrow Hub Drive, and down below is the grand opening of the pickleball courts, which were officially begun and have been very, very popular with the village for the present time. Our demographics in the village are about the same, the size of the village hasn't changed, we have about two thousand six hundred and sixty-nine estimated village residents, that's down a couple from last year, and single-family residence is what we have here in the village. We have two school districts, as you know, we have Princeton School District and Sycamore School District as part of our grouping. But, on the other side, we have twenty-two thousand people who work here on a daily basis, and actually, that is probably a little low for right now. General Electric has continued to hire and have other businesses in Arrow Hub and other places, Gold Medal Products has continued to hire, and Enable Injections has continued to hire, so we're probably over that to some extent, but that list gives you an idea of the different businesses that are in the village of Evendale. As we indicated, General Tool Company, which is resident of Redding, they have quite a capacity in Redding, three hundred thousand square feet, they were out of space down there, and they came to us and asked if they could become part of Arrow Hub. We went through a process of evaluating them, and it was determined that they fit the nomenclature of Arrow Hub, and so now they have a fifty-five thousand square foot building that's under construction. It says it's a ten million dollar project, but this was printed a little earlier, actually it's a fourteen million dollar project now, it's gone up quite a bit. They will have forty-seven full-time professional jobs by two thousand and twenty-six, and they will have a payroll of four point one four million dollars a year, quite in addition to our village coffers, as you might say. We have continued to market Arrow Hub, where the roadways are all in and installed, we have lots ranging in acres from one point eight to nine point five. Colliers International is our broker, Nire Property continues to be our design-build company for the area, and we have had ongoing discussions with different people to come into Arrow Hub. Frankly, we turned down more people than we even talked to because they do not fit. We've had food banks, we've had other stuff, that we just say, "You're not a fit for Arrow Hub," and they don't come here. Other activities, we've had a number of state officials in here, the picture, lower-right picture, was Colonel Zeiss, was the governor's personnel, person on aerospace, he handles all of that for the governor of the state of Ohio, and he came down and visited us on occasion, quite very interesting as to what's going on. We continue to negotiate with St. Rita's for the vacant land, which we would integrate into Arrow Hub. The school remains active, and it would continue to be a permitted use, mainly we are talking to the Archdiocese of Cincinnati about potential purchasing of the property. The ongoing gun range, for I can state pretty dramatically that it is going to move, two thou, or beginning January or February of two thousand and twenty-four is the date that they've tentatively talked about, beginning the shovel-ready site to go. The funds have been secured, thirty million dollars it's going to cost to move that gun range from Evendale to Colrain Township, it's along the Great Miami River. Currently, the sheriff's office has a gun range over there, but it needs to be expanded to handle quite a few more police officers from the city of Cincinnati, but it's pretty certain now that it's gonna happen, I never thought I'd see it in my lifetime, but it is going to happen. Next to the gun range is the QTC building, it was formerly occupied by General Electric, the problem with that was that General Electric only used about sixty percent of the building, the other percent was not usable because of water damage, both through the floor and from, down from the roof, it is now vacant, General Electric has moved out, it's on the market, and we're looking to see if we can secure that, we let that for potential inclusion into the Arrow Hub concept, and in which we will have then probably close to one hundred acres available in Arrow Hub. Village Crossings has take, been looked at very diligently by us, that's the little shopping center across the way, we've been very concerned about the looks of that for some time, and they have, it's-
We've got a lot of established tenants.
We're doing a market analysis at this time, see what is the best, and for the tenants that are there, and for additional tenants to come in, we've been offered some right-of-way property free of charge, and we're looking at incentive options perhaps, to be able to include in the Village Crossings concept, to make it a bigger and better facility for the village. Twenty-three recap of GE Aerospace, sixteen million, sixteen point five million of new investments have gone on in two thousand and twenty-three at the GE facility, one hundred and four thousand over that in permit fees as of October of two thousand and twenty-three, so they are on the move, they are building, they are improving their facilities quite a bit. They, by March of two thousand and twenty-four, they indicate to us that it will be designated as the world headquarters for GE Aerospace, that is when they are going to separate their other two companies, one is a power company, and the other is a medical company, they will be spun off from GE Aerospace, and Larry Culp, the head of GE Aerospace, or the head of the whole company now, he will become head of GE Aerospace, and we understand that he has already bought a home someplace in Evendale. As you can see by the little news things on there, a lot of stuff going on, they just signed a big contract with Air Canada, and they can produce the engines faster than Boeing can produce the airplanes right now, as far as they're going. Other business activity, we have leased the two acres of land just north of the Acres on Redding Road, they are in the process of clearing that, we leased it to them for one dollar for five years, they're clearing that, and they're gonna put up a seasonally-themed walking trail, lights and other goodies, and we think it'd be a nice attraction to the village for there. We've been working on SORTA, the transportation system, with the bus company, and we're looking to improve the bus stops quite a bit, some of them have become quite a problem for us in the village, and we're looking to try to take care of that. Future plans, fifteen to one hundred thousand square foot expansion of a local manufacturing company. Trophy Pizza, which just started up less than a year ago, is ranked number eight of the twenty-five best local pizzas by Cincinnati Magazine, after less than one year in business, and we're kinda proud of that, and kinda think they might be looking for more space in Evendale. Enable Injections, number one, the best-funded startup in the village, or in the Business Courier. GE Aerospace is number three in the world, Formica is number twenty as far as business is concerned, Gold Medal Products is number twenty-two, our largest manufacturing companies are those people. In addition, we've added this year Seven Hills Anesthesia, they're over on the drive behind Menards, they're the sixth-largest physicians group in Hamilton County, dealing with doctors, and they've been quite a success for us. Princeton is the fifteenth-largest school district in the area, in the state, and Sycamore is the sixteenth-largest public school district in the region. PA Technologies, now these are, this is another company that has inhabited the old kinetic vision facilities over on, behind Menards, and they're the twentieth, considered the fastest-growing companies in the region, they assemble and develop parts for consoles, is what I understand they do. Building Department Stats, there was one point two million reported investment in existing single-family housing in Evendale, four thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars of residential permit fees, people doing home improvements and things like that, twenty-eight point nine million in estimated construction costs for all permits to date, General Tool being the largest of them, is what they have taken out permits for. Code Enforcements, we are instituting legal action against three properties near or on Redding Road for unkept parking lots, unkept parking lot conditions, this is the old Frish's site, it's part of village- It's part of Village Commons up there at the corner where there used to be a Pizza Hut. And the third one, oh, is the former Homer's site, which is not being maintained to our well enough we want. Within the village, we established the new pickleball courts, four new courts. We have a new service department building, which is pictured over there on the easels, give you some idea of what it is. It's gonna be, it will be, it will house all of our equipment for the first time. We have equipment stored over in Bird Brothers, former trucking company. This equipment's very expensive, and we need to be able to put it someplace. Phase three of the Recreation Center renovation, which is down the hallway, is ready to go. And we have established three AED devices throughout the campus. We're seeking funding for an additional seven, which would give us a total of ten ADE devices, they help in case of heart attacks. Village of Evendale Gas and Electric Aggregation, we've done both, and they're listed there as to what we are paying right now. The gas supplies and the electric supplies, they were very tough to come by. Our director has worked very hard on those things, and Duke remains our billing agent, but we get the lower cost per kilowatt hour, or CCF. There's no fee for anybody in the village to participate with that, and you, if you're participating and you don't like it, you can opt out anytime that you so choose. Okay, thank you. That will conclude my part of the discussion, and I will turn it over to Council President,
Thank you, Mayor. I've got reports on two items. First will be the Cultural Arts Commission. A Year of Arts Celebrating Two Thousand and Twenty-Three. Greetings, dear friends and fellow art enthusiasts. Let's look back on the remarkable year we've had at the Evendale Cultural Arts Center and Bell Tower Arts Pavilion. Our venues have seen some exciting transformations. The Bell Tower Arts Pavilion has been enhanced with top-notch theater lighting and magnificent new windows, elevating the quality of our performances. Over at the Cultural Arts Center, we've made significant strides toward becoming more accessible with ADA compliance, thanks to nearly five hundred thousand dollars in grants, in grant funding. In two thousand and twenty-three, our arts programs truly flourished. We were thrilled to welcome back Cincinnati Playhouse in the Park, gracing our stage with several exceptional live theater performances at the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion. Our monthly art ventures continued to be a source of adventure and delight. We explored and, thank you, that helps a lot. We explored an antique car collection, got up close and personal with the wolves at the Red Wolf Sanctuary, and even embarked on a fun-filled visit to a local chocolate factory. May brought us the Twenty-First Annual Evendale Fine Art Exhibit, showcasing the incredible talents of our local artists. The Evendale Room at the Recreation Center hosted rotating exhibits, introducing the works of some of Cincinnati's finest artists right here in our community. Our global exploration took us to the stunning landscapes of glaciers in Iceland, New Zealand, and Alaska with stunning photography by Eric Hatch. And as always, our beloved pool fence became the backdrop of our annual Evendale Juried Photo Exhibit, which, if you haven't had a chance to see, it's out there right now. I think it hangs till the end of November. The highlight of our summer was the return of the Big Art Party in August. We celebrated with a captivating exhibit of C.F. Payne's Fifty State Birds, and marveled at the talents of our summer art and music students. We were delighted to welcome Grace Markley as our new program manager, and made significant improvements to our blossoming ceramics program. The performing arts took center stage on the newly revamped Bell Tower Arts Pavilion stage. We continued our fruitful partnerships with the Tri-County Players, the Center Stage Players, and the Cincy Lab Theater, presenting original productions and left our audiences spellbound. To all our residents, artists, and friends who have been our pillars of support, thank you. Your enthusiasm and love for the arts have been our driving force. As we turn the page to two thousand and twenty-four, we invite you to embark on new art adventures with us. Let's continue to evolve, change, and be inspired by the arts, creating a vibrant cultural community that we can all be proud of. I'd also like to thank Susan Gordy, who does a fabulous job with that program, and all the other departments that help support both the Cultural Arts Center and the Recreation Center for all the great programs that both of those groups put on for us. All right, I'm gonna shift gears now to the Recreation Department. In the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three, we saw the retirement of our Recreation Director, Kim Peillage. She's enjoying retirement by traveling, spending time with her family and friends, and enjoying herself on their boat. Her retirement led to the promotion of Adam Knight as our Recreation Director, Kristin Maiden as our Assistant Recreation Director, and Mark Hesse was promoted to Program Supervisor. Some of the great programs highlighted this year, Gingerbread Housemaking, saw eighty-eight families, Snow Much Fun returned, Daddy Daughter Dance had forty-six attendees. In February, they began the meet and greets. The weekday children's programs were offered, twenty-three programs this year, hundred and sixty-nine participants. They had multiple egg hunts, I think there was three different kinds of egg hunts this In adult programming, they had bongo nights, putt-putt leagues at the New Acres, they had nine meet and greets. We had nine pavil, in the Pavilion Series, we had nine performances over here at the Founder's Pavilion, as well as free yoga on Monday nights. We had the family pool party. We had Fun in the Sun again this year with two hundred and ten participants. We had our Forty-Second Annual Fourth of July Ten K Race, and our, in our Fourth Fest, as they call it for the evening, which was culminated with a thirty-plus-minute fireworks show from Ross's. In July, we partnered with Evendale resident Matthew Waters for our first annual Original Music Festival. The event brought three bands, nine singer-songwriters, a food truck, folding, and water balloons. There will be a few tweaks for year two, but we will look to build on this for years to Our ladies tennis team and junior tennis team both won their divisions. Once again, I get to report that the Evendale Swim Team won their league for the twelfth year in a row, and if I'm not mistaken, it's probably like twenty-four out of twenty-five They've been exceptional, especially for a community of our size, because we go up against a lot of communities that are, that are much larger than us, so. Very dedicated group of people run that program. They had the Pool Bash returned for its second year with an eighty-nine percent increase in, in signups this year, in registrations this year. Had the mother-son minute to win it. We had several of our fall soccer teams go to the Say State Tournament. We had the Halloween Fest. We lit up the Glendale-Milford Road Corridor for October with the, with the fall lights. Fence art over at the pool. We had Five Lambda Pi had twelve seniors this year graduate, and we welcomed, so far, ten new eighth graders to almost replace them. We need a few more. We also have started a new program, it's called Impact Fifty-Seven, and that was offered for the first time in October for kids in grades five through seven. This is a new thing for us, so we're trying to fill a gap in our programming, quite frankly, and we look to have monthly activities for this age group to get them back active at the Recreation Center, and to hopefully use it as a feeder into Five Lambda Pi. Got a few facility improvements, I guess I don't have to mention, I think it's already mentioned twice, the pickleball courts. The men's bathroom and breezeway over at the pool were renovated. We added a weightlifting rack and utility trainer to the fitness center this year. The first phase of the pool furniture replacement was accomplished this year. We also got new pool lighting. It was converted to LED, so I think that brings us pretty much for all the grounds up to, up to date with the, with the new lighting. Looking ahead, the mayor mentioned the phase three of the Recreation Center updates, which, as he said, will be in the south end of the building, and those will be coming soon. We are currently in training to adapt a new software to use for our programming, which should lead to online registrations, hopefully, finally. We look forward to continuing our relationship with both SwimSafe and FitMe's for the pool and for the fitness center this year. They've, they've served us well in the past, and we can continue both of those contracts. And I'd also like to thank all the recreation staff, as well as all of our village departments again, for all the work they do. They work so well together to accomplish all of these outstanding programs.
Good afternoon. I am Beth McDaniel. I was really first on the list, but I let Bill go first. So I am going to be giving you the report on Gorman Heritage Farm. So a couple weeks ago, I met with Nicole Gundermann, who is the executive director of the Gorman Farm, and she gave me a tour of the farm, and I, I learned some things at the farm that I had no idea about. The first thing she showed me was this refrigerated shed, and I, it was, it's very cool thing. I didn't even know that was possible. And they're using this refrigerated shed to store their cut flowers. The cut flower garden has become very popular, and it's a big revenue generator for the farm, and this refrigerated shed has really helped with the project. And then I came to find out later that it was actually an Eagle Scout project by one of our residents, Petey Wilkins, and it is really impressive. So thank you and congratulations to Petey on a job well done. Another thing I learned while I was at the farm was that we have several fig trees growing there. I didn't know what a fig tree looked like. I didn't even know we could grow fig trees in Ohio, but now I do. So Nicole and I were looking over, she's showing me what a ripe fig is supposed to look like. It's supposed to be like a marshmallow, soft and puffy, and I'm looking at these, and finally, she realizes that someone else has already collected most of the ripe figs for the day, but she did find one, and she picks it off, and she takes it up, she's all, we need to wash it, she takes it over, she finds, we wash it, and she hands it to me. I'm like, she's like, you can, you can, I go, do I just eat the whole thing? She's like, no, just take a bite of it. Took a little bite, I was like, okay, now I know like what a fig, and then walked with it for a little bit, and she goes, you can throw it over there. I'm like, I'm not eating the rest of this thing. Threw it over into the, into the woods, but I was kind of impressed that we have fig trees growing in Evendale. So another thing I learned, I follow Gorman Heritage Farm on Facebook, and I saw a post about sweet potatoes. So a few weeks ago, they harvested a record-breaking six-pound, six-ounce sweet potato. And then this week, they shattered that record. They harvested a ten-pound, six-ounce sweet potato. That is larger than, I have four boys, that is larger than any of them when they were born. Ten-pound, six-ounce sweet potato. If you don't believe me, check their Facebook page, they have pictures on there. You can even buy these large sweet potatoes. They also have regular-sized sweet potatoes available for sale, and other produce in the, in the interpretive center there. And you can also order Thanksgiving turkeys. I forget the number of turkeys that she told me, but I saw them on my, on my tour too. But you can order those online, and they do sell out every year, so if you're interested in that, you probably need to do that pretty soon. So check out their website for more details on that. So Nicole and I are walking along the path, and we spot a cow and four sheep over in this little pasture, and she says, let me see if I can get Eddie to come over here to us. I'm like, Eddie? So she's Eddie, Eddie, woo-hoo, she got some whistle, Eddie. This cow looks up at us, looks right at her, and starts walking over to her. Now, I did not know you could call a cow to come to you, but, and I said, whoa, I hope you have some treats in your pocket there to give Eddie when he gets over here. And she says, Eddie doesn't even like treats, he likes just for me to pet him and rub him. I'm like, oh my goodness gracious. I did not pet him, sorry, sorry, Eddie. He just loves to be petted by her. She's, she's awesome. Her enthusiasm and knowledge of everything about the farm is remarkable. If you have not met her yet, stop by and just say hi to her, she will love it. She really is, she knows so much about everything at that farm. There's also, she's kind of the star of this twenty-minute video field trip that was recently filmed at the farm by WCET, PBS, Ohio Learns Three Sixty. And she takes us on a tour of the farm, and it also highlights some of the other staff at the farm. They show some sweet potatoes, they show how to dig up the sweet potatoes. It'll be broadcast on all eight Ohio PBS channels, and you can watch it on demand via the Think TV PBS YouTube page. And I'm sure they're gonna share that link on their Facebook page too, but I sat and watched the whole thing, and it was, it was really good. I think kids at school, you know, I was a teacher, I think I would have used it in my, in my classroom. So maybe we can share that on our page too. Let's see, Nicole explained to me that the Gorman Heritage Farm Board of Directors has recently completed their five-year strategic plan for the farm. They collected input from all kinds of key stakeholders, and they will use this plan to guide the farm's operations and investments for the next five-plus years. And as part of this, their mission statement was revised to reflect the impact of their efforts. The updated mission statement is to cultivate a healthy community through farm-based education and experiences about food, sustainable agriculture, agriculture, and the natural world. So I think they definitely are living up to their mission statement. The farm has continued to invest in stewardship of our natural resources, and has completed the first phase of watershed restoration on the upper portion of the stream system. There was a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the H2 Ohio Quarry Wetland back in September. There was a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the H-two Ohio Quarry Wetland back in September, and now the farm has been awarded another grant by the Ohio EPA Three-Nineteen Program for the second phase of restoration. This project will de-channelize the lower portion of the stream, and work will begin in early 2024. And Nicole showed me all of this, and she understands how all of this de-channelization works, and it was pretty amazing. Along with our partner iSpace, work on the soil in Starr's Education Center continues. There's been a big increased demand for summer camp and field trip programs, along with increased participation in adult programming. Work on the teaching kitchen is almost complete, and this will improve the very popular cooking and nutrition classes for kids and adults. In 2023, the farm's two signature fundraising events surpassed their budgeted goals and attracted more support than ever. The Row-by-Row Farm-to-Table Dinner sold out and raised an unprecedented seventy thousand dollars. The Sunflower Festival, beautiful weather this year, brought eight thousand people to the farm over two days and raised a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is forty thousand more than they raised in 2022. So this really shows that people understand Gorman Heritage Farm is a place, place worth visiting and supporting. So I know you're wondering, what are some ways that I can get involved at Gorman Farm? Number one, you can just visit the farm. Enjoy the gardens and historic farmyard, or take a hike on the trails. Go visit Eddie. Go see the fig trees. Go see the sweet potatoes. Number two, you can become a member of the farm. Evendale residents are always welcome to visit the farm, but you are not automatically members of the farm. Membership supports the farm and provides discounts on programs, classes, and camps. You can also volunteer at the farm. There are lots of different opportunities for everyone to volunteer. Number four, you can take a class at the farm. It's a great way to have fun and learn new things. Number five, you can bring a child or a grandchild to the farm, go for just a visit. They have preschool story hour or summer camp. And then number six, you can always attend a fundraiser. The dates for 2024 have already been established, so mark your calendars. The Sunflower Festival will be October fifth and sixth, and the Row-by-Row Dinner will be on Saturday, August twenty-fourth. So mark your calendars for those two great events. So I'd like to thank Nicole for the tour of Gorman Heritage Farm, and I encourage all of you to stop in for a visit and learn some new things. So, and now I think that I was going to introduce, oh, Councilman Tom Sextro is next. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Good evening, everyone. Nice to have a crowd here this evening. My report is on Service and Engineering Department. This department is currently managed by James Jeffers. He is director of this department. His team is made up of ten individuals, where each have their own specialties. For example, Brandon, he specializes in electrical. Tim specializes in building maintenance. Shannon specializes in ground maintenance, just to name a few. I consider each team member of James to be a yeoman. A yeoman is a person or team that works hard and does valuable work to support a cause, and they're definitely all an example of that. If you would see them out and about, please thank them for a job well done. They fix things and make things look nice throughout the village every day under our noses. They take pride in everything that they do, and they would appreciate a thank you. And I've asked a few of them, they said that most of you do thank them for a job well done. You can see them as they work, they definitely take pride in what they do. In addition to the typical services provided by this department, such as snow removal, which they responded to seven events this year, other typical events include grass cutting, brush clipping, special pickups, and maintaining the village buildings. But addition to the ongoing work that the, this, this team does, the department has completed several projects, and they're continuing other for the enhancement of the village. For example, here are ten key projects that this department was involved in in, in 2023. Road resurfacing, this work just started last Monday. They have completed Braywood, and Kingsport is complete, and the entire project should be done within the next two or three weeks. The project consists of resurfacing nine streets, four-point-two lane miles, and forty-one hundred, using forty-one hundred tons of alf, of asphalt. The department also has replaced and repaired Sixteenth Street catch basins in anticipation of this project. We would have started this road resurfacing earlier, but the installation of Alta Fiber, that, that network had interrupted that service, so we couldn't start until last week. Pickleball courts, I think we heard a lot about pickleball courts. It did open up in July twenty-ninth. Pretending to pickleball, they are currently constructing an observation and waiting area, and this area, this deck should be completed by December first. Street tree replacements, the department has replaced sixty-six trees in the right-of-way of Cooper Road, Glendale-Milford Road, and Redding Road. And we look to continue this, replacing a few more trees next year on those three main corridors. Shred recycling day, the department assisted in the annual shred day, including paper, household chemicals, and electronic recycling. This year, a total of forty-nine thousand pounds were collected. That's just under twenty-five tons of recycled material in this small village. It's a slight increase from 2022. Next year's shred day has already been rescheduled, or has been set, scheduled for April twentieth. Another program this, this department accomplishes every year is the leafbag program. This program has been completed. We distributed twenty-one thousand bags to over two-hundred-and-ninety households, which is impressive. Cultural Arts Center, the Service Department has recreated and installed a new retaining wall system on the north end of the building to, to allow greater access to the lower levels of the facility. In addition to that work, the roof was also removed and replaced this past July, so the cultural arts center is looking very good. The Bell Tower Art Pavilion, all the doors and windows have been replaced throughout the facility. I think that, that's taken a little longer than usual, because I think those were the original windows and doors of that facility, so it was quite a project to, to complete. The recreation center's north roof was corrected. This project entailed replacing the membrane material over the north end of the recreation center, which is the, it's the, the north end is near the front entrance of the rec center, which is just outside these doors. Also wanted to note, the pool house exterior received new LED lighting fixtures this year. I think throughout the, the complex, we're all LED, we're at a hundred percent LED lighting for the facility. Those are the ten projects that were completed, the key projects that were completed in 2023. In 2024, we have these to look forward to. The most exciting event for the department, as well as the village, is the new service facility, which the mayor has spoke about earlier. We have some signage here that you can view and look at the new facility. It's great to have this onsite versus offsite, which would have been, you know, close to a mile away on either side, going up and down Glendale-Milford Road. So this is definitely a much better option, and it's an exciting option. We are currently working on finalizing the drawings, which you can see right there, and hope to commence the work, as weather permits, early next year. It's going to be an eighteen thousand square foot. The current facility is about eight thousand square foot, but it's broken up. And it'll be constructed on the north side of the annex area, which is just east of soccer field number three, which is this direction over here. The trees have been removed to have an accurate site survey for the design and construction of the new facility. And the existing facility will be repurposed for storage equipment for several of our other departments. And, and again, the rendering of this new service department, which will be our pride and joy next year, is shown right here to your left. For next year, because of the safety task force, we will be installing safety enhancements around the municipal complex. These enhancements will include cable guardrails along Glendale-Milford Road, as well as steel bollards along the municipal drive, which is along the service where this, where the current service department is. Also, we're, for next year, on the road resurfacing, we are evaluating, preparing the documents for bidding of next year's programs, which will probably be, again, between nine and twelve streets. And with that, that concludes my report for service engineering. If there's any questions, we'll hold them until the end, but want to thank you for coming this evening. The next report will be on fire, which will be reported by Steve Burke.
Good afternoon, and thank you for attending tonight. Fire Department, we're very lucky in the village to have the department that we have. This is a report for 2023 and actually the end of 2022. Schedule changes. The biggest thing happened this year, change in work week from, for personal, for personnel from fifty-three hours to forty-eight hours a week. This provided more time off in increasing the morale in personnel. No change in annual pay, but increase in hourly wages. Thirty-two percent decrease in overtime. That falls to the bottom line. Forty-one percent reduction in sick time taken. And the other thing that's not mentioned on here, but it has, has had a huge effect on hiring additional firefighters. Our, our answers to our applications have increased tremendously. Employment changes, and it's actually during this time, if any of the firefighters are here, I would like you to stand if I mention your name. Firefighter and medic Jennifer Volmer resigned from the department, so she won't be here. Firefighter medic Mark Bond retired after thirty-year-plus career with several departments and more than twenty years with the Village of Evendale. Firefighter Craig Kennedy retired after thirty-plus years with the Village Fire Department. And also welcome Thomas Stahl. Is Thomas here? Veteran fire service for more than twenty-two years of experience. And welcome Clint Platt, a five-year veteran of the fire service who left the city of Forest Park to join our department. Welcome Timothy Gory, a seven-year veteran of the fire service who left Sharonville to join Evendale. Think it had something to do with the changing of the, the hours. Future command changes, firefighter medic Andy Wolfong promoted to lieutenant in January, will be promoted to lieutenant in January 2024. Firefighter medic Stephen Roos promoted to lieutenant in January 2024. And lieutenant Josh Asbrock promoted to captain in January 2024. And lieutenant Andy Ailer promoted to captain in January 2024. Retired, retirement of Captain Bob Murray in January 2024 will be the end of his more-than-forty-year career in the fire service, the last twenty with Evendale. Retirement of Captain Dan Graham in first quarter of 2024. He will end his twenty-six-plus-year career with, all with the Village of Evendale. So grants, we thrive. Grant awarded to three, for three automatic external defibrillators, AEDs that have been installed. Mayor Finan mentioned those around the campus. The locations are at the new pickleball court, enclosed shelter house, and Bell Tower Memorial. These stations will automatically alert the police and fire department if the device is removed. And being in that industry for so many years, time is, to save the brain is very important. So the quickness and quick response time is so, so important to help somebody if they've had a cardiac arrest or a heart attack. Building upgrades, new bay floor for apparatus, replacement, that just happened, finished up last week, replacement of additional and addition of drinking fountains throughout the building, replacement of the apparatus bay doors, which has been long overdue, replacement of flooring in the administrative side of the building, repainting of the administrative, administration side of the building, new dehumidifier added to combat a moisture issue in the portion of the building. Training in, since, in two twenty, twenty twenty-three, two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-four hours of training in a hundred-and-eleven-hour employees in 2023. Future expenditures, replace obsolete radios in the ladder truck. These have already been budgeted. Replacement aging ropes, rescue equipment, and conducting a feasible study for the building for future improvements and remodeling. Purchase of a forcible door simulator and upgrade our stair chair to reduce employee injuries. It's what climbs, if you have a multi-level, it actually climbs the stair, or reduces, goes back down the stairs, but also climbs as well. Grants, we thrive grant. Did I say that already? Well, actually, there's another one, as Dick mentioned earlier. A second award to Evendale, but this time for seven additional AEDs just this past Friday, was awarded to us. Thank you for the team for doing that. This makes a total, total of ten AEDs throughout our campus. These seven will be located in both indoor and outdoor use, two in the cultural arts building, two in the Bell Tower Pavilion, one in the administration building, one outside the group fitness room on the wall of the rec center near the softball fields facing Glendale-Milford, and the seventh one in the parking lot island between the fire department and the rec center. This concludes my report of the fire department, and thank you, gentlemen, for serving us.
Okay. Let's go to finance. First of all, in my earlier report, I forgot to mention that we've had a lot of complaints about noise coming from General Electric and the testing of jet engines over there. We don't know specifically what it's about, but we have a meeting next week with the GE people, and we're hoping to get some more valid answers as to the reason. Years ago, they moved their testing facility from the GE campus to Peoples, Ohio, but for some reason now, I'm sure there are new engines or new ideas for engines that they're testing, but we're going to find that out next, next, next week. One of the things that came up on Meet the Candidates Night was the, the issue of audit reports and records of the finances of the village. We've had clean audits now for quite a number of years during the tenure of our chief financial officer, and the, the financial records are always available. Cynthia's in the back, go see her. Anytime you'd want to know what the financial records are, what we're, we're, we're spending, and she'll be happy to help, help with you. Back in 2022, we did a fire and police department wage study. And what, what it resulted in was that a change in it, as, there's been initiated about the forty-eight hour a week. Overall wages for our people, we try to stay in the top third of all of the area agencies. And we're not the highest, but we're not the lowest. We try to stay in the top third. Healthcare costs on the other side of the fence have doubled since 2017. Healthcare costs on the other side of the fence have doubled since 2017. They were 69, $659,000 in that year. Last year in 2022, they were $1.2 million, and they're going up every year. We have been fortunate that we have a quote for next year that for the raise to be limited to 4%. If that happens, and I think it's going to happen, we're on the agenda for council next week, I think we're going to get a break for a change, and we're going to stay with Anthem, which is our, our healthcare provider in this situation. The village participates in an extensive wellness program. All our employees participate in it, and that helps keep the rates down by doing what they prescribe to keep people healthy, and it's been very effective. Village has recovered from a COVID downturn that we had, a conservative budget during that time, and the village reserves helped us to preserve the budget of the village, and it allowed us to maintain all of our services during that time, but we were very careful with our spending. Now tax receipts are back up, and they tend to, they're tending to surpass receipts from last year, which were over $16 million last year. The growth allows us to complete additional capital projects, such as the, the service department building, and not eat into our reserves. And additional, many of these are things that we have put off, and they're absolutely necessary for us to continue to provide the services that we do. The, we work on a five-year budget plan for capital projects, and the department heads tell us what they want. We come in, we look at it, and we go through them each and every year to see what's feasible and what's, what's not. It helps to keep the village viable as far as going forward with the capital projects and for many years to come. And that will be the finance report. And next we'll have Carolyn Smiley Robinson.
Well, I'm last, as usual, no problem. And I'm going to be reporting on the police department. So I thought I would start with the perspective from the police chief, so I'm going to quote him on this, and since I've gotten up in age, must wear reading glasses. Last year, this report began with discussing the number of retirements, promotions, and new hires at the police department. We are pleased to report that all of the new officers and new supervisors are performing very well in their new roles. They are embracing their new roles and are firm in their commitment to providing the highest quality and professional service to the residents and businesses of the village. So I thought I would start out with how the police department serves Evendale. Now, this is the audience participation part. I bet you didn't think there'd be one in these reports, but does anybody want to guess how many service calls the police department had last year? And the chief can't answer because he gave me the answer. And nor could my husband, because he already knew what the answer is. Okay, nobody wants to throw it out? How about we do a show of hands? How many people think we had more than 1,000 service calls in the police department? Okay? How many people think we had more than 2,000 service calls? All right, pretty smart group. I'm not going to keep asking, but I'm going to tell you it's more than twice that. It was over 4,000 service calls in the police department to this point in 2023. The most frequent of those were traffic-related, in other words, auto accidents, disabled vehicles, or other traffic hazards. Next would be alarm activations, followed by a variety of trouble calls. But in addition to those calls, the police department conducted more than 1,000 traffic stops, more than 3,200 extra patrol requests, and more than 1,200 vacation home checks. So we have a very busy department. A primary focus of the department this year has been finding better ways to address mental health issues while performing their duties. An increasing number of calls involve someone that may be experiencing a mental health episode or have an issue, and it's been a challenge for the department to try to work through that and to get the appropriate training for that. So the department has selected Sergeant Tina McCormick to be responsible for coordinating follow-up efforts where mental health issues led to police involvement. She meets on a monthly basis with other law enforcement officers, mental health professionals, drug treatment specialists, and a variety of social service agencies to ensure we provide appropriate referrals for those who have mental health issues. This has been a very successful effort, and we expect it to keep growing. So I commend the department on addressing this issue in a very, very productive manner, and it's been a great help, I think, to our police officers. Looking to, a new strategy we're looking at, looked at in the department, and we have implemented a change in the way we support the Evendale Elementary School after having discussions with the school, with school personnel, as well as the Princeton School District. We're moving away from the traditional DARE officer to a part-time school resource model. And since my husband is here and asked me this question when I was kind of going through it, DARE stands for Drug Abuse Resistance Education. We feel like a more appropriate model now is to support the school with a resource officer. And the benefits of doing this is that an officer will be present at Evendale Elementary more often, and it also allows for building a stronger relationship between the police, the students, the teachers, and the school staff. The department has implemented some new tools and technology, one of which is a new record management system, which was implemented at the beginning of the year. Been several advantages to this system. It allows us to integrate with other agencies in our area, which is tremendous help when you're conducting investigations. Also, all of the records are in one system, hence the data is more accurate, i.e. we know we had more than 4,000 service calls, and we go one place and get that information. We've also implemented the flock camera system, and if you listen to council meetings, you know that we've talked about that from time to time. But this new technology has proven to be an immensely effective tool to detect and apprehend criminals. There are specialty license plate reading cameras located strategically throughout the village. It's a great resource when you're trying to investigate crime. So as a result, there have been dozens of crimes, some including violence and firearms, which have been successfully prosecuted as a direct result of information gathered from these cameras. Technology is great, calls are great, but unless you have the personnel who are well-trained and professional enough to handle these situations, then we won't be able to do as well as we do in our department. A lot of this is a result of training, and this department prides itself on all officers maintaining a skill set that allows them to address a variety of everyday and unusual demands as they come up. And also, they strive to provide a level of proficiency and competence in a particular skill set. In other words, there are certain people who may specialize in a certain area, like maybe somebody specializes in drones. I didn't hear anybody mention drones. We talk about that all the time. But we have drone technology, and we have people who specialize in that. So different officers have different specialties, but everybody has a base level. External training this year is focused on a variety of skills, mostly in the area of supervision and leadership, criminal investigation, crime scenes, and auto accident investigations. Internal training is scenario-based and has focused on judgment and decision-making, de-escalation, and appropriate use of force. And you'll probably recognize those, excuse me, the internal training that we focus on are areas that nationally other police departments have struggled with because they don't have those kinds of skill sets in their department. Also, in 2023, the state of Ohio has mandated some new training requirements, which involve legal updates and the Ohio School Threat Assessment. All of our officers have nearly completed the state mandated training this year. And in total, all officers spent approximately 1,500 hours in professional training. So we have a well-trained, very professional department. As a reminder, the police department also provides some of the following services. We've already spoken about the annual shred day. There are vacation home checks as well, residential security analysis, and a prescription drug drop box. So before I close, I'd like to again quote the police chief directly. The police department prides itself on its culture of service to the Evendale community. It strives to provide the service consistent with the needs, expectations, and values of the community. Its effectiveness in meeting this goal is enhanced through its relationships and effective communication with the residents and businesses in the village. Please feel free to reach out to the department or stop by anytime you have questions, concerns, or ideas you want to share with them. And I would like to state as a council member who chairs the committee that police issues are discussed in, I want to note that as a community, we all have a role in making Evendale community, making Evendale a community where everyone feels safe to live, work, and play. But I would just like to thank the police department for the role that they continue to play to make Evendale such a safe community, and ask that, we applaud the efforts of the police department and recognize that over the last year, when there was so much transition going on, it seemed seamless to us in the community as how we were represented by the police department. And if I didn't mention your name, Tim Holloway, thank you so much. This has been a great year for us going into it. It's a little bit scary to transition as much as we did in a, in a short period of time, but it's been done well. So thank you, police department.
Okay, now we get to questions and answers, or questions, and we hope we got the answers from the audience. Can, do we have the ability, can people call in and ask questions also? They can, on pay-to-play?
Facebook.
Facebook. So anyone who's watching on ICRC can perhaps call in and ask a question also. So, ah, the mic is over there. So who wants to start? Well, those dinners were costing the village between 12 and $15,000, and we decided that we felt we could have some better place to spend the money. In addition to that, there's a number of things between the latter part of the year that are part of the recreation department, where there's dinners involved, such as the Christmas light up or Christmas things. We felt it became duplicative of the situation, so we decided not to have the dinners anymore. Well, after we did the repaving job, which did not cost us anything, Duke, Duke Energy repaved Glendale-Milford Road for us, that was probably with the repaving and the restriping, probably a million dollars that the village saved in that process. But then they had a water main break on Glendale-Milford Road right near Kingsport, and that's where they had to dig up the street. They had to dig in a couple of spots till they found the exact water main break. They put it back at first, I think it was a temporary patch, and then supposedly they came back and were smoothing it out and making it the better level. Little bit of a bump there still, but I don't know how much, yeah, I don't know how much we can do with it. I just don't know. It's in Glendale-Milford. Yeah. Yeah, right by Kingsport. That's where the water main break was about six months ago. Well, that's the story. James will take a look at it. He's hearing you in the back. We'll take a look at it. Any other questions? Comments?
Actually, this is a question from my wife. Did they read my questions on the update of Giverny exit onto Glendale-Milford?
Of the which exit?
The Giverny exit onto Glendale-Milford. It's, it's partially blocked by shrubbery.
Yeah, Giverny.
You know, the main entrance.
Yeah.
The Park Hills.
Yeah, the entrance to Park Hills, basically.
Well, here's what we understand from the Park Hills people. They supposedly want to redo that entrance from Giverny or whatever the name of the street is, onto Glendale-Milford Road. And therefore, we are putting off repaving in that section there. Now, if they don't get to it pretty soon, we're going to have to go ahead and do it, but they want to make a major upgrade to that, to that intersection and everything that's there.
Which will bring much better visibility.
Yeah, that's, we want to improve the visibility there because it is, it is a problem.
Yeah, my son, my son was actually hit there when pulling, pulling from Giverny out onto Glendale-Milford. He was actually.
Yeah, if you're in the right-hand lane to make a right-hand turn and somebody pulls up on the left side of you, it's impossible to see traffic coming up the road. And this, this upgrade would supposedly take care of that. That's Chris Patterson, who's head of the planning commission. Any more? Nobody coming in? Folks, we thank you very much for coming out tonight. We hope we have been a little bit educational for you. I think our team has tried to do a good job for the village, and we hope to continue. So have a good evening. So have a good evening.